Good morning. It's Wednesday, October 24th. We're here for our weekly board session. And as always, if you'll join me in opening with a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we are here in the Senator hearing room at 555 Court Street.
Could have been perfect.
I know. Well, it's perfect afterwards.
I know.
So, we have nobody signed up for public comment this morning, so we'll go right into the consent calendar if you will.
Chair Cameron, I make a motion to approve our consent calendar this morning. In the clerk's office, we approve an order appointing Micah Moskowitz with the Marion County Board of Property Tax Appeals with a term ending June 30th, 2019. Health approved the retroactive contract for services with Mid Valley Behavioral Care Network for $215,555.93. The contracts for services provided by subcontractors Oregon Family Support Network, Hand Youth Move Oregon for family, and Peer Support from August 1st, 2017 through October 31st, 2018. It's about 10:00. Treasurer's office approve a resolution eliminating the change fund at the Marion County Health and Human Services Department State and Clinic.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. So, our first item under action, which I believe we were going to try to move this one to the consent calendar, we didn't quite make it there, so we're going to do it under action item. And Lisa's here to present to us, consider approval of an order adopting revised administrative policy number 809, sales of excess tax foreclosed and surplus real property. Good morning, Lisa.
Good morning, Commissioners, thank you. For the record, Lisa Trowernett. And after our management update meeting on Monday, I'm here to present policy 809, which has gone through an extensive review process and several iterations that have been presented to the board. So, I'm here to present that for your approval. The policy is the sale of excess tax foreclosed and surplus real property. Basically, the, some of the big changes were just to clarify the county's role in selling or transferring property that has been gone, that has come back to the county through tax foreclosure.
And we had a pretty good discussion with Jeff White and others, yourself, on Monday. So, Commissioner, do you have any comments here?
I just can't pass up the opportunity now. Lisa promised me before this meeting that there would be a complete, comprehensive, and technical explanation of this subject. I guess she covered it. Chair Cameron, I make a motion that we approve an order adopting revised policy 809.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussions or questions for Lisa?
No.
Okay. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thanks, Lisa, for coming down.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next item of business under IT Information Technology, consider approval of purchase order in the amount of $1,170,365.12 to Presidio Network Solutions Group, LLC for Cisco Hardware to support Marion County's enterprise network design. Scott, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Scott Amory, Information Technology Director. And I'd really happy to introduce our new information security officer who's with me this morning. It's, I think it's, oh, yeah.
Hello, everyone. I'm Mark Blockstone.
Mike, welcome. When did you join Marion County?
Roughly two weeks ago.
Okay, did you, were you in orientation?
Yes.
Two weeks ago?
Yes.
Oh, well, you didn't remember me then, because it was him, I think, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Brent, I'm sorry, Brentano did speak, but I do recall you being sitting in the back.
He always puts me in the back. Yeah. Welcome. Good to have you.
This morning, we have consideration for approval order agreement with Presidio for Cisco network equipment in the amount of $1,170,365.12 for rebuilding the county's data network system. The network equipment is replacing the backbone connection between county campuses, also revamping connections to the two county data centers, as well as replacing equipment in each of the buildings that we own or lease. Existing equipment is well past its expected lifespan and is prone to constant failures resulting in lost productivity for the employees of serving the county. This year alone, we've had more than 20 equipment failures. The purchase is one part of a multi-year effort to address network capacity issues, where in fact, more of the business services are actually shifting to cloud-based technology, increasing resiliency by limiting single points of failures, and to reduce risk related to security vulnerabilities. To address concerns that usually comes up in the Q and A section, we are in fact planning on making sure that we avoid future large-scale equipment replacement costs by implementing a continuous lifecycle replacement plan where we're able to actually go through and replace equipment at a lower rate and put it over time. So, we want to make sure that we actually kind of do, could do diligence on the assets we have and not just do these peak replacements every five years. One of the other things I should note about this particular procurement is that we're actually up against a wall from a timing perspective. We've been informed of steep tariffs related to computer equipment around about 10%. So, by actually moving this procurement forward at this time, we're able to avoid about $100,000 in computing equipment cost. And that's, that's pretty much the summary. I'm happy to take any and all questions. Again, this is just one part of our network redesign effort.
Questions?
Well, I don't see it. Just, so how does the installation and when, when is it workable, finished, et cetera?
That's a real good question. It's going to take about three years. There's about five distinct layers, and we're starting from the ground up, literally in the ground. This is part and parcel to working with the city of Salem to move over to their fiber. This includes those aspects of just getting our campuses connected. That will take place this year, in addition to actually putting new equipment in each building. That's just the core. But we have layers that are related to wireless. We have layers that are related to towers where we have microwaves that connect these remote sites. We also have the emergency management layer, which the sheriff's office and Public Works is very much engaged with. That's part of the reason why it actually spans at least three years of effort. There was no way to kind of rebuild all five of those layers at once.
Scott, I'm looking, I'm looking at the detail of this contract and all these different parts, right? I mean, every one of those parts is itemized. There's some sort of a chart out there that if I looked at my eyes would be like cross-eyed and glazed over. There's a plan, a three-year plan implementing all these pieces of equipment throughout the whole county.
Yes, and I have a summary that I'm happy to just kind of run through if you'd like, but absolutely, there are, there's, there's the equipment itself, but realistically, it's how we connect people. More and more people are mobile. So, rather than just having the hardwired in the wall, people expectation of being able to go off into the field and be able to stay connected now suddenly changes. We're rather being like internally within the county walls, we're now expected to kind of behave and act as good citizens now on the world wide web where we have people that are mobile. That's what complicates this, and that's why there are so many parts to this effort.
So, just in layman's terms, if I want to call, when this is all done, I want to call over to Sam's office from my office, which we never do anyways, but, or I want to call the front desk. Is it the same physical phone that I'll be using, but it'll just be a different system that it's going through? Or is it going to impact that system at all?
I'm trying to think how to put this in layman's terms. The key is making it seamless. Today, if you're a county employee, like for example, in this facility, and I walk between floors, I have to take my computing device and do a reconnection. In the future, when we actually have this implemented, you'll literally be able to walk between buildings, open up your computing device, and you'll be instantly connected. And it's a vast difference between the way we work today and in the future. Part of your question in around the telephone is because there's this notion of what they called unified communication, which means it's seamless, to the point where we can actually even detect whether or not you're sitting in your office. So, if you walk away from your office and you have your phone, forward it to your, to your mobile device, it will know where you're at and make sure the phone is routed accordingly. So, it really is kind of a convergence of all these technologies. They're not new. This is not cutting edge.
Right.
We are just really getting current is really what we're headed for.
Okay, good. That was a bad example. I don't, I've never called your office, but I have called Sherry or Kristy.
You'll like knowing if I'm in, though.
Yeah. Yeah. Tracking him. Yeah. Any, any questions?
No, it just shows my silliness, because all I, for any upgrade that doesn't involve changing my passwords.
Oh, well, unfortunately, we do have our security officer here with us, and we'll be bringing a policy probably in a few months related to changing passwords.
Well, that was a mistake.
I've always thought it was interesting that I have to change my telephone password here at the county, but I never am forced to change my computer password. That's going to change, is what I just heard you say.
It will be, and I, that's why I brought my shield with me, because I know that is a difficult conversation.
It's all right. I just never be able to use the equipment again. It's swell.
Yeah. No, we have people that'll come down and do it for us. Yeah.
I'm having second doubts, Chair Cameron, but I would make a motion, we do approve a purchase order in the amount of $1,170,365.12 and exactly 12 cents to Presidio Network Solutions Group for Cisco hardware support to Marion County's enterprise network redesign.
I'll second your motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mike? It's Mike or Michael?
Mark.
Mark. Not even close.
That's all right.
Mark, welcome aboard. Scott, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Good luck.
And stay out of my office.
Don't worry, he's just a teddy bear. He just sounds rough. All right. Let's see. Where are we? See, I knew I was, I knew where I was until now. Okay, Joe's here, so we're in Republic Works. Consider Oregon Land Use Appeal Boards. Oh, wait, we're going to go into public hearing, right?
No, you've got one action.
No, 9:30. Consider, number three, consider Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals, Luba Remand of Conditional Use, CU number 17-020 Brush Creek Solar LLC, Klopfenstein, Clerk's File Number 5735. Joe, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Joe Fenimore. This item before you today is a conditional use to establish a solar power generating facility on a 12-acre portion of a 14 and 1/2-acre parcel in an exclusive farm use zone. In June 2017, the funding director approved the request, and that decision was appealed to the hearings officer who conducted a public hearing. The hearings officer then issued an initial decision denying the request. That decision was appealed to the board. The board accepted that appeal and remanded the matter back to the hearings officer to consider additional evidence and argument. Then in February 2018, the hearings officer issued a remanded decision approving the request. That remanded decision was once again appealed to the board, who ultimately denied the appeal and accepted the hearings officer's decision approving the request as its own. That decision was then appealed to Luba, the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals. On September 16th, 2018, Luba issued an order remanding the matter back to the county for a couple of reasons. One was to determine whether police services are a rural service under the Marion County Code, and if so, whether adequate police services are available to the property. And secondly, they also need to determine whether the solar array will create unnecessary negative impacts on the agricultural operation on any portion of the property that's not occupied by the solar array. So, there's a couple of things Luba said needed to be addressed. The applicant has requested the county proceed with the application on remand. In order to proceed, a public hearing is required, so additional evidence and argument can be submitted into the record for consideration. The board can conduct its own hearing, remand the matter back to the hearings officer. Also, the scope of the review must be determined. Regarding the scope of the remand, you have the option of limiting, limiting the scope of the review to the sustained assignments of error in the Luba remand order. You can limit the scope of review beyond those assignments of error, or you can not limit the scope of review at all. Also regarding the processing of the remand, you have the option of, of remanding the matter back to the hearings officer for a public hearing and decision, refer the matter to the hearings officer for a public hearing and recommendation, and then schedule a public hearing before the board to make it a final decision, or you can just schedule a public hearing before the board. Staff recommends that the board limit the scope of the review to the sustained assignments of error in the Luba remand order, and that the board refer the matter to the hearings officer for a public hearing and decision. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
That's a lot.
It's, it's a lot of words, but there's not a lot, I mean, the focus, they, they, there were like, I think, 11 assignments of error that the, that the opponents assigned. I think two and maybe part of another one were sustained. So, and very limited on what, on what wasn't, additional evidence that was needed.
And, and your recommendation is that the, the board limit the scope to review of those sustained assignments?
Correct.
Jane, any comment if I could ask?
Yeah.
Commissioners, I did have an opportunity to review the hearings officer's order and then the Luba decision. It seems really comprehensive, so I think to, it would be appropriate to limit your review to Luba's essentially two and a half findings of error. And that, as Joe said, is the determination of whether police services is a rural service, and then also the impact on other parts of the property that aren't where the solar is situated. So, I would go with, I would support Joe's recommendation.
That was already my conclusion, and I don't know that we want to get back in the middle of things, and I certainly don't want to open it up to further questions if it's down to just two or two and a half. So, hearing that, thinking about it, and I did wonder, reading through it last night, I think, I think the motion I would make is that we do limit, take the recommendation of staff, limit the scope of review to sustain assignments of error, and the board refer the matter back to the hearings officer for a public hearing and decision. That's my motion, essentially the recommendation.
Okay, there that was in the Luba remand, right? Okay, I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe, for all you do. Think you're up later on. We got about 10 minutes, so we will stand in recess for 10 minutes until we open a public hearing at 9:30. Okay, we are back. It is 9:30 on October 24th. We are here, we're going to open a public hearing, a public hearing to consider zone chains, comprehensive plan, conditional use, ZCCPCU, case number 180-001, PNP Properties LLC, McCallum Powder LLC, Clerk's File Number 5781. Joe, welcome.
Once again, good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Joe Fenimore. This item before you today is an application to amend the comprehensive plan designation and change the zone from special agriculture to industrial with an acceptance to statewide planning goal three on two 1-acre portions of the 79.66 acre parcel, and then a conditional use for explosive storage facility on the resulting industrial zone property, portions of the property. And the property is located in the 10,000 block of Enchanted Way southeast. It's about 2,000 feet east of Interstate 5. All the adjacent properties are zoned SA except for a portion of the PNP quarry, which is zoned public. The hearings officer held a public hearing on the application on March 21st, and on September 29th, the hearings officer issued a recommendation that the request be approved of additional sufficient information provided by the applicant. The property is subject to statewide planning goal three, agricultural lands. In order to request, in order for the request to be approved, the applicant must justify an exception to this goal. In this instance, the applicant proposes a reasons exception. This type of exception is based on the concept that the use is so unique that there are reasons that it cannot be located in existing exception areas, urban areas, those kind of places, and that the property is suitable for the use. The hearings officer conducted a detailed review on the, on the applicable goal exception criteria and found that the applicant needs to provide additional argument or evidence that there are no other resource lands currently committed to non-resource use that could accommodate the use, and that the applicant needs to describe in more detail the surrounding farm and forest uses and practices, and, and determine if they could be adversely affected by the proposal. If satisfactory additional evidence is provided, the hearings officer recommends the board take a reasons exception to statewide planning goal three, grant the conditional, comprehensive plan amendment, zone change, and conditional use requests, subject to the conditions listed on in item 34 on page 24 of the recommendation. The applicant has submitted additional information for your consideration, and I will let him present that to you shortly. You have the option of continuing the public hearing, closing the hearing and leave the record open, close the hearing and approve, modify, or deny the request, or remand the matter back to the hearings officer. And I'll be happy to answer any initial questions you may have.
All right. I don't have any questions right now, but, Commissioner? So, well, thank you, Joe, and we'll go through the presentation from the applicant. So, Mark, welcome. You want to introduce yourself for the record, please?
Good morning, Chairman Cameron and Commissioner Brentano. For the record, my name is Mark Shipman. I'm a land use attorney with Sawfield Griggs, 250 Church Street, Southeast, Suite 200, Salem, Oregon, 9731. Here this morning on behalf of the applicant, McCallum Powder LLC. I was hoping that Tyler McCallum was going to be here. Tyler is one of the co-owners of McCallum Powder and McCallum Rock Drilling, along with his sister. They have two operations, one in Salem and one in Centrelia, and Tyler's in charge of the, the one here in Oregon. And hopefully, he'll be able to make it this morning. So, the question before you is whether you should approve the combined application of McCallum Powder to allow the storage facility for explosives on the subject property. In summary, we believe you should approve the combined request as proposed by the conditions of approval that staff has prepared. Joe did a, kind of a brief background, but I'd like to kind of go through a couple of items. We've handed out a revised site plan for you to take a look at, and also what I've done is I've brought up that site plan in kind of a larger scale for you to, to look at. The subject property is actually located south of the Turner Interchange and off of Enchanted Way. The property is bounded in orange there on your map and here on the screen. That's owned by PNP Properties. PNP currently has, is, has a gravel, an aggregate mineral extraction operation occurring here and also occurring down here. They have obtained exceptions to statewide goals for that operation, and in fact, this portion right out here that you often see as you drive down Interstate 5 has been an operation on and off as an aggregate site since the 1950s. Our proposal is to essentially put in gravel, or I should say, our client's proposal to put in gravel pads that would be tamped down, would be secured with, with security fencing, and that's where they would be storing their explosive materials. Access to the property, primary access would come off of Cloverdale and then off of Ridgeway, and then onto a private access road that currently serves the eastern portion of the property. That's the primary access. Secondary access would occur off of Enchanted Way, and there's a, there's a, an existing service road that comes up and around the, the existing gravel pit that comes up and circles back up this way. The reason that we're using Ridgeway as the primary is because there is a very steep grade in here. There's a hairpin turn and a steep grade, and they would just prefer that their trucks not have to go that direction, but they can if they need to. We're asking for two, and so this is a slight change to what we presented to the hearings officer. Initially, we presented one 2-acre site that was going to be in this location. We're asking for two sites here and here. And the reason for that is, is that a 2-acre site upon our client's reanalysis would not satisfy the ATF rules, but having a 1-acre site would satisfy the ATF rules with respect to setbacks, and that's the big deal here. ATF requires that there, there has to be more than 1,750 feet of setback from any occupied building. And we get that at this location, and we also get it at the second location. The second reason that we're asking for the two 1-acre exception areas is the property owner, PNP, is leasing this to a gravel operator, and that gravel operator has been in touch with McCallum Powder and said, "Look, we would prefer that you have two sites so that if we need you to, if we need you to use one, relocate part of your, your storage containers and, and materials to one versus another, you have that flexibility." And so, that's why we have the two sites. In our supplemental statement, we've submitted two legal descriptions. The hearings officer recommended that, and recommended that you require that. We have submitted those legal descriptions, and those legal descriptions correspond with these two locations right here and here. So, we are seeking approval for, to store those explosive materials. And those materials are going to be used really for, for two purposes. One, McCallum Powder currently serves the existing aggregate, the gravel pit operation there. They currently do blasting for that, for that operator, and they have for, for, for years. In addition, this location is, is really uniquely situated with respect to the I-5 corridor, being able to get on to Highway 20, to get over to eastern Oregon, and also to be able to get on to, get over to the coast. McCallum Powder does work for ODOT. They do work for counties. They do work for, for a lot of timber companies and for large farm operations, and when, when they're, they're needing explosive work done with respect to clearing rock or with respect to building roads. As noted, that the use is really unique, and if you've had a chance to review our, our application materials, you'll note that the, the material actually stored on site is inert. It doesn't, it doesn't have a risk of fire, it doesn't have a risk of explosion. It, it doesn't have a risk of anything until it's combined with other materials, and those materials are never, are never stored together. They're actually stored in separate, what they call magazines, and then those magazines are then taken to the job site where they're, wherever they're going, and then they're combined together to be able to form essentially the necessary material and, for the application of the, of the blast. These, as you can imagine, McCallum Powder takes their, their role and their, their, their compliance with ATF very seriously. It's taken them a long time really to source, not just this site, but just to be able to source exactly the, the exact location, because this is something that's going to have to be approved by, by ATF as well. So, not sure if it was noted in the application, but Tyler and his family have been involved with prospective mineral and aggregate in, in that industry, forest farm, road building, since 1988, as far as, as far as supporting those industries. As Joe noted, the hearings officer found that we either could meet or, or either met or could meet all the approval criteria, felt we were a little light with respect to the surrounding uses, and then also, she also felt that we could have done a better job with respect to identifying resource properties that had been already irrevocably committed to non-resource use and evaluating why they were not suitable for the intended use. So, we put together the supplemental findings that are in front of you with respect to those two key issues that she addressed. And we went to some detail with respect to identifying the surrounding, the surrounding areas, and what we used is we used the notification area with respect to the surrounding area. We specifically excluded lands west of the 5 in the analysis because frankly, they're not impacted in any way. And when you look at the use, what the impact really is, is it's traffic. There's no noise, there's no sound, excluding the, the controlled blasts that are occurring in this, in this quarry, but that's there anyway. That's already currently there. Adding these, the storage facilities is not going to increase that in, in any way. And there's no odor, and so really, when you talk about the types of impacts that could occur in the area, it's, it's traffic. And so, if you focus on our primary access way, again, which is, which is off of the Enchanted Way, off of Cloverdale, up Ridgeway, it's primarily these properties in this area that could be impacted by anticipated traffic. And the nice thing about this application is that the traffic is fairly minimal. So, what we did in the, in the supplemental statement, as you'd see, is that we identified all those surrounding properties in there, and we color-coded them. We color-coded them based on whether they were forest, whether they're generally farm, whether they were rural residential, and that could be seen on both tax maps that we put together in Exhibit A and Exhibit B in your packet. And again, the, our position is the only impact is traffic. Now, what the applicant's operation is, is they will essentially be bringing in materials either daily or every other day to the site, and they drop those materials off and then they leave. That's it. They don't stay. There's going to be, there's not going to be any stored sort of office or, or storage, not, shouldn't say storage, but any sort of office facility there whatsoever. And then, as crews need those materials, whether it's for this site or for it's another site, somewhere in Marion County or somewhere else in the state, they will come to the site, they'll pick up those exact materials they need for that job, and then they leave. And so, on any given day, we're talking about roughly six trips total. That's it. Very minimal impact with respect to Ridgeview, with respect to Cloverdale. Very minimal impact with respect to Ridgeview, with respect to Cloverdale Road. That's why in our supplemental statement and why we believe that the impacts to those existing farm and forest uses that are occurring in this area are going to be nominal. This is really actually less impact than a single-family residence would have out in that area. Because a single-family residence pursuant to the, the traffic generation manual generates roughly 10 tri, 10 vehicle trips per day. This would be less than that. With respect to the second question that the, kind of the, the subpart of the first question, it gets to, you know, whether that the proposed use would have a, would significantly increase the cost of farm or forest operations in the area. And, and our position again is it wouldn't. I mean, the proposed storage use is located centrally within this property. P&amp;P owns all the property here in orange around it. And again, those traffic impacts were, are going to be fairly minimal. We're not talking semis, we're not talking tankers. These are, these are going to be panel vans and pickup trucks that are coming and going from the property. So, very, again, very little impact to existing roads that are already in good condition.
Excuse me, did you say they're not going to be tanker trucks?
Not tanker trucks. Not tanker trucks, so it's going to be...
So, the trucks that are, before this, the trucks that are going in and out today are, are gravel trucks, right? Or large, large trucks. So, the trucks that are going to be coming in are very small trucks?
They're smaller, that's correct.
Small quantities. They're not carrying huge weight.
No.
Okay.
So, with respect to the second issue on the irrevocable, on looking at those lands that are already irrevocably committed, and we really thought about that, that, because that's difficult. So, Marion County doesn't keep track. You don't keep a list with respect of lands that could be potentially already irrevocably committed. And when you think about lands that could be irrevocably committed, they're either irrevocably committed because of they, they're physically developed, or they've got some unique aspect to it. And when you start talking about physically developed, really what you're talking about is you start getting into the occupancy issues and the ATF rules. So, if you've got a property that already has homes on it, or if you've got property that's got a business on it, commercial business, industrial business, some business that they're using an existing structure for, that's considered occupied. An ATF would have a prohibition with respect to locating any sort of storage within the appropriate setback requirements under their regulations. So, we talked with Joe about this, and we just, we came to the conclusion that the likelihood is that there's very few parcels in Marion County that would actually qualify to be able to cite this, this storage of these explosive materials on it. And then, the other part of that is when you look at it, you look at the comparative advantage with respect to this property. And, and again, we don't know what those other properties are because it's, it would be extremely difficult to identify what they are. So, our position is that, is that, you know, based on the unique nature of this use and the ATF rules, taking a look at, at lands that might be irrevocably committed, it just, it just doesn't work. So, in conclusion, we believe the combined request is, to the exception of statewide planning goal three, comprehensive plan change, zone change, conditional use permit, and the limited use overlay zone. There's a lot of applications here. We satisfy all those approval criteria, and would request that you approve this, this application, subject to the conditions of approval. Tyler McCallum is here. He's, he's, he's in the audience. So, if you'd have any questions of, of him as the owner of the operation, or from his project manager, Ramon, he's here too, and he can answer more technical questions. If you had technical questions with respect to the, to the explosives and their storage, I can have either one of them come up and address questions of the board at this time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mark. Nathan, you're signed up. Are you okay with, with Mark's testimony? Commissioner, you...
I only have one question, Mark, and I think you could answer it. It had to do, well, there's some of the comments I have. Had to do with security. I know you say these are kept separate, but obviously, I could even think of things that you mix in that suddenly makes it dangerous. So, what would the security system be more than the fence that is described in the application?
Commissioner, the, the, the materials are stored in what they call magazines, and they're stored in separate magazines that actually go into a storage building that's, that's fire-rated and explosion-rated. And so, they're already in, in storage containers, you know, small ones and then larger ones that are already separate. And then, then these are stored, this is going to be essentially put on a concrete, or not concrete, but on a gravel padded area that's cleared and graded, and that'll have security fencing all around it.
Just so you're clear, I'm not worried about it blowing up. I am worried about people getting into it. Is that addressed any more than just a fence?
I, I believe that, that, I mean...
You want, you want, you want to come up, Tyler, and speak to that?
Yeah.
Just introduce yourself for the record, please. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Tyler McCallum, owner, co-owner of McCallum Powder, McCallum Rock Drilling. So, yeah, we follow very strict ATF guidelines as far as the security of the explosives, from the signage to the locks that are required, how those locks are accessible, having them, I guess, so people aren't able to shoot at them. That's one of the biggest concerns is, is people, you know, they, they're stored in these areas where people like to go and shoot guns, typically rock quarries and stuff like that. So, that's one of the big things that they've built in. So, the locks are set in behind steel. The magazines themselves are specific quarter-inch thick steel, so they're very, very robust.
Electronic monitoring of any kind?
No.
No.
Have you any problems with the, with the Centralia side?
No.
Nope.
I'm not saying it's required, I just figured there would be.
Yeah. Yeah, no, there's, I don't have the ATF requirements in front of me, but there's extensive requirements as far as security goes for access.
Okay.
Maybe that's a question I, I think I heard Mr. Shipman say at the other site. So, the other site where you currently operate this type of a storage operation is where?
It's in Onalaska, Washington.
Okay.
And we have another one in Madras, Oregon.
And how long have those been, those two sites been in existence?
The one in Onalaska, it's part of another explosive operation. It's been there for at least 10 years. And then, the one in Madras is at a rock quarry that we've recently put in, and that's been there for less than a year.
Okay. And no, no vandalism or...
That's correct.
Problems? Okay. I guess, Mark, the only, the only question I have before we're done here, and we don't have anybody signed up in opposition, so it's just in support of, of this, but is the truck question. I think you answered it. There's 10 trips per day now basically from the quarry. Is that what I heard you say?
No, there, we've not identified how many trips are coming from the quarry. There's substantially more than 10.
Okay, but this would only add maximum of six trips, light trucks?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Anything else for...
No.
Okay. So, we have nobody signed up to testify in opposition. Joe, do you need to come up, back up and share with this?
Thanks. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Well, I guess there was two issues. And Mr. Shipman talked about the resource, other resource lands and, and there, and then the surrounding uses. I-5 obviously being a barrier, and they've identified the, the closest building, so there's not a problem. Those are the two issues, I think, that were, were brought up to us, right?
Correct. I reviewed the information they submitted, and I believe it meets, it meets the criteria the hearings officer was looking for.
Who was? Yeah, just before I go to Jane, the other thing I had was on page 10, again, the BOC may wish to consider requiring proof of fire district approval. Has that been done with the fire marshal? I think we had some comment here that got submitted to us this morning or yesterday. Do we know if that's...
We're scheduled to do that on Monday, meet with the fire marshal.
Okay, yeah, this, this, basically, this email was from somebody that was handed to us today, Parish Gap Road. They testified at the hearing, agree with the recommendations, and that Chief John Remy is on top of this. So, you're scheduled to meet with John?
Yeah.
Okay. Jane, did you have a comment?
I just had a question, if the council, if the commissioners don't mind, for Mr. Shipman. You mentioned something about shooting in quarries. Is that been an issue here? And would that affect the safety at all?
No, and I guess I could have clarified that a little bit. That's mainly on timberlands, when people go outside of town to, to shoot in rock quarries because it provides a backdrop. So, I think it's something that has been an issue in the past for the ATF, but as far as I know, it's not an issue in, at this site. It's a private, you know, privately-owned site.
Okay.
It would, if, if what's going on here, we'd have a problem on I-5.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
This, this quarry's right up against the freeway and Enchanted Highway, and we've had that issue, member of...
Kaiser.
Kaiser, people over in Polk County, and a few little things have hit people, not hit the people yet, but good question.
Right.
I have one more. I was just curious, because you have two other sites, how much, what's the quantity of explosives that you're going to keep here? And in what area does it serve?
The quantity will vary. I don't know, it's going to be changing constantly, and you may have that. I think it's, I think it's 80,000 pounds is, is our cap.
Max.
Yeah. So, typically, this site will serve everywhere from the Portland-Vancouver market down to probably Roseburg, if not further south. So, mainly on the I-5 corridor.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, that'll be good that we have some, some economic value. I noticed that in here that pretty good economic issues that were in there. It's important. Yes, sir.
I think all my questions have been answered, but I had one that's kind of outside of things. I just want to know for my own sake. Joe, so they comment that you can't have an inhabitable house 1,800 feet or whatever the number was from, from the site. Was that, would that ever preclude anyone else from being able to build within that radius? Does that ever come up?
No, I believe that, I think there was talk, was there a condition, Mark? Yeah.
Commissioner Brintano, there's actually a condition of approval that the, the hearings officer identified with respect to that very issue. And I'm trying to find it here.
It's on the bottom of page 24. And it says, if I can go ahead, Mark? It says, "If an inhabited building is erected closer than 1,730 feet to the exception area, the applicant will reduce the amount of explosives stored on site to match the lesser distance required by ATF regulations."
I didn't see that, thank you. But so, do we give notice to people that, that this issue exists or that there isn't?
We would not normally do that, no.
I, I think that would be more of a regulatory issue.
So, we, excuse me, Mark. So, we would know in our system that, that something has to be addressed if somebody did? I don't even know that you could build in this area so hard in rural areas, but I just want to make sure nobody gets surprised.
And I don't know, do you do an annual renewal for your ATF?
How does that work?
Do you know?
I know, we get audited by the ATF once a year for our, at our storage facilities. I don't know. I would assume that would include the table of distance as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I see that on page, that's where the limitation is of 80, 80,000. It's the same condition there. So, yeah, that goes back to our, our other issues that we've talked about on, if somebody around there applied for a building permit, how would we, how would we know? Are we going to be able to identify those particular properties that potentially could qualify for that today? I mean, is there anybody there that could qualify?
I, you know, since the surrounding properties are zoned down, so as you know, that zone is not an easy zone to...
Right.
Get a going approval in. So, without looking at each property individually and, and evaluating, I, I can't tell you for sure which ones could possibly...
So, in that process, if somebody did try to go through that difficult process to build, there, there would be a, a hearings process that probably would rediscover this?
There would be a land use process. And we can, and we can also, we can also, and we'll probably do this, is we can mark these sites on the zone map.
I was going to ask if we could, so that would be something I'd certainly like...
That's something we could do as, actually, as a, is identify the sites in the buffer area, so that we know.
But what would it say?
I don't know.
We gotta be careful, we gotta be careful here with this security.
I'll, I'll figure it out.
Okay.
And I'll let you know in the future what that is.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of all kinds of things here.
All right, if I could ramble just a little bit more.
Yes, sir.
So, I started to say I'm pretty well satisfied, conditions have been met, that irrevocably committed or other ref, resource lands is what I was looking for. And yeah, I can think of other places that might work, but it, but even off the top of my head, there's nothing with access to transportation, isolation, and industrial use already going on. I think it fits pretty well, so at least I'm comfortable with that part. So, then, Joe, I'll just ask, I'm not quite sure what we want to do with this. Your recommendation just says to approve if additional satisfactory information is submitted, but I think there's others from the hearings officer asking, and I'm not sure if we need it, but a statewide goal planning, exception be, and the conditions be met in the hearings officer's report. So, make me up a motion that, that covers it.
So, you would move to approve the comprehensive plan amendment, grant the goal exception, grant the zone change, and the condition use approval, subject to the conditions identified by, by, in the hearings officer's recommendation?
I wasn't fast enough to write. Christie, were you? Would you repeat it again, Joe, and then I'll make that motion?
Slow down, Joe.
I always have that problem, don't I?
That's all right. We'll remind you.
So, you would have approved the request to amend the concert, amend the comprehensive plan from industrial, from special agricultural to industrial, with an exception to, reasons exception to goal three, and then approve a zone change from special agriculture to industrial? Is that with a limited use mark? With, with a limited use overlay?
Okay. And...
And, and...
Conditions.
Any conditional use for the, for the, for the explosive storage facility, subject to the conditions identified in the staff room, in the hearings officer's recommendation.
All right, Christie, if you have that well enough, I'll make that my motion with addition to closing the public hearing.
All right, I'll second the motion. Any further discussion?
So, we will bring this back in ordinance form?
Sure.
So, you'll have a chance to look at the, all the conditions listed in, at a later date.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing that all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you very much.
Right? Kind of want to come out and see a demonstration someday, how that stuff works.
No, you don't even paint straight lines on county roads.
You're not getting me around explosives. All right. So, the public hearing's concluded. That concludes our normal business of the day. I will read the calendar, where we're going to be for the week. Tomorrow at 7:30 a.m., I think I got to be there at 7.
Now, because you're a star right here.
Yeah, let me read this, and then we'll come back and talk about it. Tomorrow, 7:30, at the 10th Annual Giving People a Second Chance Breakfast, location at the Salem Convention Center. And then, on Monday, the 29th, at 8:30 a.m., we have calendar review here in this building on the fifth floor in the Silverton Conference Room. Monday, on the 29th, at 9 a.m., management update, fifth floor, Silverton Conference Room. Monday, the 29th, at 11 a.m., Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council Planning Meeting here on the fifth floor, Silverton Conference Room. And Monday, on the 29th, at 1 o'clock, Marion County Extension and 48 Service District Meeting here on the fifth floor in the Silverton Conference Room. Busy Monday. Tuesday, at 9 a.m., work session on communication systems here in this building on the fifth floor, 9 o'clock. Tuesday, at 3 o'clock, the 30th, Willamette, Mid-Willamette Homeless Initiative Steering Committee, location is the conference room A at Mid-Willamette Valley Council of Governments at 100 High Street, Southeast, here in Salem. And then, on Wednesday, the 31st, we're back here in our board session at the Senator Hearing Room. And on Wednesday, the 31st, Governor's Reentry Council at the Oregon State Library at 250 Winter Street, Northeast. Winter Street Northeast. So, wanna go back and talk about tomorrow?
I'll, I'll start. This is the reentry event, the Commissioner Carlson's final one as a Commissioner, thinking, just sitting a minute, it's grown so much, from a small group to now perhaps a sold-out event at the convention center. I don't wanna say that because I also heard her talking about having some additional capacity with tables available if people show up, so I, I hope they do. But it's such a great opportunity to learn about programs that she's led, and we've certainly cooperated with, to make life better for people in Marion County, and we'll hear some terrific success stories, I'm sure, as we usually do, and I hope it's a great event, she wants it to be. In spite of you being a star.
Yeah, you know, she, she's been the champion for this issue, and, and I kinda wrote her tail, what do you call it, your, your coat tails, right?
Oh, okay, yeah, there's a little different interpretation there, but go ahead.
Coat tails, yeah. And it's been, and I was at that first breakfast when I was in the legislature, actually spoke. I'd just come back from Israel, and I remember talking about David and Goliath, and standing there and thinking about how this was such a big issue, and yet, we could overcome it and make a difference if we just all focused on a little thing that we could all change. And, and in the legislature, I sponsored all kinds of bills, and I was in a meeting yesterday in the Governor's Reentry Council that I still serve on, and we were, this was a new group that was formed about legislative concepts for reentry. And I was thinking, back 10 years ago, that I would file these bills because Commissioner Carlson would come over and say, "We need this," right? And it wasn't the reentry council that was moving this legislation forward, it was us. It was just that partnership with her and Marion County, and Chip Shields from downtown Portland, and it's not a partisan issue. And if you think about it, you have people on, on reentry and recidivism that care about it because it's a return on investment. You, you put a dollar in and you save all this money because you're not putting somebody in jail, or they're not doing another crime. And then you have the people over here that, that say, "This is a hard issue, and we need to help these people and turn their lives around." And, and so, it's one of those issues that no matter how you think about somebody who's made a mistake and gone and paid their dues, you need to come together and figure out how to change their life, 'cause it changes our lives too, if that person doesn't go back, and that person does change their life. And tomorrow, we're gonna hear about some of those stories. She's worked really hard on putting this together, she's gone through the script with me, hopefully I can stay on script. You know, my problem, I say things sometimes that I get off script. There's a couple places where she said, "You have to say it this way," so...
Exactly.
So, I will, I will go back and...
Let me know.
Highlight those in red.
So, I can hedge you.
Yeah. So, I think it's gonna be a great, a great conference, and I, I think of all the work she's done, and, and how it will, we're gonna miss her, but the momentum and the things that she's done, and how to keep those going in the future will be a challenge that I will take, take on to heart. I, I can never do it the way Janet does it, but it can still be done in a real positive way.
You know, for, for bringing it home personally, and I've told this story before, about five years ago, I had a high school youth acquaintance doing pretty well, that had, has had trouble. Didn't, he didn't know I'd be there, but he made a point of coming up afterwards, and he, and he just says, "In all honesty, this program and this particular woman that was leading it saved his life." And he meant it, and I know he meant it. So, it kinda brings it home...
Yeah.
...how, how personal it, maybe it can help anybody, but...
Yeah.
If this one works.
That's good. What else, what else is, so we got that tomorrow, but, oh, man, it's been busy, 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 for me anyways. All right, anything else? Fish coming on?
No. Talking about closing seasons down, could be a disaster.
Oh, that's what I wanted to share, right? I know I've shared this with you in another meeting, but last Wednesday, after our board session, so Wednesday night, I was up at the Federal Lakes Meeting in, in Gates, our quarterly Federal Lakes Meeting. We had an hour and a half presentation from ODFW about...
Had they talked about not, oh, they were talking about seals, but not about not introducing steel at any more in the Saniam?
They never brought that, they never brought that up.
I'm gonna interrupt you, 'cause this just absolutely angers me, 'cause they do this every time, and there's a lot of state agencies, in fact, veterans, and you think, what's connected? But they pass off, for one reason or another, that they can't provide service like they used to because of whatever. And their budget stays the same, and they don't provide any service. Isn't that wonderful?
How much does it cost you to get a duck tag?
Well, those numbers go up.
Right.
I'm sorry, you touched one...
Anyways, I was gonna talk about the seals, and those really friendly furry things that sit down in front of the falls. And this gentleman who's had an accent, so you know he's really smart, right, smarter than you and I, who is a fish biologist, had said he got assigned to study seals, so he became a seal expert. And this is the one thing that, one of the things I remembered, is they actually put trackers on these seals so they can tell when they're coming up, and they physically observe them, and this one seal that they were able to watch, actually physically watch, ate 198 Chinook salmon that season, one seal. And I was sitting next to Greg, who runs the Minto Fish Collection, where they collect all the Chinook that come up the North Saniam, and, and take them up above the dam, and I don't know if anybody's watching, but every Chinook that gets that far goes above Detroit Dam and gets released, and either in the North Saniam or the Brighton Bush, and spawns up there. And I turned to Greg, and I said, "That sucker ate 198, how many seals were there?" And I go, "How many Chinook did you collect this year? 1,000." So, if there's 10 seals down there that ate 200 fish, right, there's more than that. The amount of fish that, that Greg's collecting is getting at least halved by that. Why don't we, you know, so anyways...
Absolutely. And just 'cause I'm, you've mentioned them, I got to spend some time, I'm forgetting his last name.
But, Greg Berger, Burgers, it's Burger something, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I probably have it, but he knows his stuff, boy, he's a...
He's a smart guy, and he's, he's, he's a, but, what was I gonna say? Seals, the fish, there was something I was gonna say. Oh, oh, and it's a learned behavior. It's not a natural thing for Chinook, for seals, when they're in the, where they're in the wild, when they're out in the sea migrating up and down, it's not a natural thing for them to eat salmon. They eat smaller fish and other things, and this is a learned behavior, and he says it's like a cancer, this guy that's smart, smarter than you and I put together, he was saying it's like a cancer, and they'll actually go out and grab their friend, or another seal, and bring them over and say, "Here's how you do it." They, they're that smart. And then, he says, "If you could eliminate those that are just down by the falls, by the dams," he said, "And just keep, every time one comes up and starts to do it, if you could just take care of that fish, you would eliminate that behavior."
That seal.
Yeah.
You know, I can kinda, anecdotally, I remember it's probably 20 years ago, and I fished a lot between Milwaukee and Oregon City, and was coming back to Oregon City end of the day, and see a sea lion traveling, and "Look at that, how strange, so far from the ocean." And then, each year, you know, like pretty, before I was done, and when I quit, frankly, they were submerging the dock at Clack, at Clackemett, where I parked my boat, with 20 or 30 of these monsters on there, and they don't get that big, I'm sorry, Kevin, eating clams and plankton.
Well, they've actually gotten on barges now, and they're above the Bonneville Dam, and they're actually in the, the native fish, the Native Americans' fish place, like they're going into their nets and taking fish. Didn't our sheriff, didn't you take our sheriff seal fishing one time?
He lost one to a seal, yeah. I told him what's the matter, "You're a big, strong guy, can't you fight this fish?" And he, "It's, it's not coming." And the seal raised up with his fish in his mouth, "Okay, I forgot."
Okay, well, it's been, it's a good topic to, to finish on, it's been a good day, and I wanted to welcome Brenda to our board, you're gonna be our new board secretary, I guess, right? And welcome to the place where we never have any fun, it's all serious here. All right, we'll adjourn for the day.